Mr. Slunt, please.
Dr. Porcelina, here. Mr. Dottry?
Here.
Dr. Mutra?
Here.
Mr. Morella?
Here.
Mr. O'Brien?
Here.
Mr. Rappaport?
Here.
Ms. Zuckerman?
Here.
Mr. Palmer?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Ammer?
Here.
Mr. HoCo?
Here.
Lights in the place? My apologies, this is the light of the United States of America. Consider we honor that which is changed, one nation under God, indivisible, with a just and fair government.
The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed and acted upon. In accordance with the provision of the Act, the Monmouth Township Board of Education provided a public notice of this meeting, which included the time, date, and location that was posted at the Monmouth Township Municipal Building, all Monmouth Township Public Schools, the Monmouth Township Public Library, the Monmouth Township Board of Education Administrative Office Building, the district website, and advertised in the Daily Record, the Board's official newspaper, on January 10, 2018.
Thank you very much. Gentlemen, would anyone like to go first? Emily?
Yes. So, starting the winter season, the boys' basketball season kicked off two weeks ago, and today they came away with a victory in a scrimmage over Madison High School. The boys and coaches are very excited for their promising season. Girls' basketball is also underway, as they also come home from an away scrimmage. We hope for a successful season from them. The swim team is almost a month into their season, as they conclude their preseason. They have a tough matchup against Roxbury at CCM tomorrow. The boys' hockey team is already a few games into their season. Despite losing the first couple, the reigning Haas Cup champs hope to turn it around and gain some motivation from their annual Purple App. The winter track team has begun their preseason this week and are preparing for their first meet after the winter break. The boys' wrestling team is in the midst of their training, having before and after-school practices to prepare for their first match. The bowling team, even with their limited practices, are expected to start this season with a win, with a win, as last season was a great success. We wish all luck to the coaches and athletes starting out the winter season.
And then just going on the club side, so for the musical that we just had, they had two successful performances despite the snow that we had. The Spring Musical has already started auditions, and they're getting ready for their performance in March. And our Thanksgiving food drive ended with a collection in total of 1,643 items, which actually surpassed our number last year. Other clubs that have ended, Robotics and Forensics have just ended. They both had great years. Robotics team qualified for a tournament, and Team 30X was one point off from moving on to semifinals. And other than that, just all the winter sports just going off of will notice that have started, and we're hoping to get good seasons this year.
Thank you, gentlemen. Any questions or remarks? Now, we're meeting the 18th, but that's back at the high school. I know you guys got confused on that. We're meeting the 18th, the superintendent's making a night. Maybe she'll come in later on. Thank you very much, guys. Appreciate it. Superintendent's remarks, Dr. Wilkott?
I just wanted to note that the high school is presenting their winter concert tomorrow evening, if anyone is interested in attending. It's always a great performance. I am actually going to, we did note on the agenda that we were going to be recognizing the high school marching band, that actually was planned for the next meeting in the evening, so we won't do that then. And I am going to limit my remarks tonight, because I know we do have the presentation that will take place under Mrs. Slunt's portion of the evening.
Thank you, Dr. Wilkott. This is the administrator's report, Mrs. Slunt?
If you recall, a few months ago, we had done a presentation regarding the Energy Savings Improvement Program, the ESIP. And we had discussed at that meeting that there were two portions to this particular project. The side that refers to the actual projects, improvements to the buildings, and that we had hired Honeywell to go and do an in-depth audit of those buildings to determine which projects would produce the most savings. We have Honeywell here tonight to present on those projects and the related savings that would be part of the improvements made. So I'd like to introduce Joe Corsica to come up, and he's going to present on their findings from going through the buildings during the summer.
Good evening. Thank you. First of all, my name is Joe Kasha. I'm the lead team member for Honeywell with regards to being responsible for coordinating the ESIP program. I'd like to introduce Paul Peters, he's our lead solution development engineer. He's the one that basically comes up with the energy savings and the solutions that are related in your district. And Bob Letza, who is the lead project manager for the project as well. First of all, let me just say thank you so much for selecting Honeywell and trusting Honeywell for this project. We really appreciate it. We also want to thank you, under your referendum, for putting in a Honeywell control system in every one of your buildings, and we appreciate that very much as well. So, thank you. What I'd like to do is just provide a brief refresher of the ESIP program itself. The program was created in about, in 2008, 2009 period, it became law. Basically, it was put together as a financial mechanism for school districts to take the money that you're already spending somewhere and put it back into the infrastructure of the building. Obviously, first and foremost, the idea is to create a positive, comfortable learning environment for the students. That's the ultimate goal in school district. But the way this program works is to utilize the money that you may be spending on repairs and breakdowns and utility costs and expenses, and take that money and find a way to be creative in terms of putting it right back into the buildings. It's a very, it's a very successful program, and it's really a way to use that same dollar two times as you put it back into the building. Simply, the way it works, and I'm a pictures guy, is that you've got this big bucket of money, and in that bucket of money, you basically want to carve out and identify the items that you need to have accomplished within the school district. This school district has been very progressive, obviously, with your referendums and all the work that you've done. Honestly, it was pretty tough to find some savings here, other than the standard items. But what we also wanted to accomplish is to find a way to reduce some of those operation, operational costs. And in this particular case, Honeywell will guarantee the savings if it wants to. That's not a problem. We start out with the goals that we've identified in the RFP that we responded to and that we were selected for. And those goals were really made clear to us in the beginning in our first meeting, Mrs. Slunt, Mr. Toth, in identifying what the school district wanted to accomplish outside of what you've already accomplished with your referendum monies and your regular capital budget. And that was to upgrade the lighting throughout the facility, integrate the exterior lighting into the automation system that you're putting in under the referendum, provide cooling and repair the Hildale units in the high school wing, I think it's 500, 600. And because you're adding cooling to the district, we wanted to, you know that cooling is going to add your cost, your operating, operating costs in terms of utility. We wanted to create a cash flow, wanted to figure out a way to create a cash flow that at least will help defer some of those cooling costs as you move forward. The overall concept of the program is to take the items, or the ECMs, or energy conservation measures, that have a lot of savings and implement them. And while you implement them, you identify ways to upgrade items that would normally not provide a lot of savings. But you need them. When I say that, when we say you need them, for example, in this particular case, we'll talk a little bit detail, but in this particular case, the split system auditorium units at the high school, they're in disrepair, and they need to be, they need to be upgraded. But there's not a lot of savings associated with them. What you see here, for example, is a cost of approximately $187,000 just for those units, with only a savings of $315. But the operational savings associated with that, and not having to repair them over the next few years, is another savings. But all in all, the program itself has to have a positive cash flow each and every year of the program. That's what makes it legal. In your particular case, the items that are the good, quick payback items, obviously the lighting retrofit, the building envelope, the solar PPA, which is a power purchase agreement that we're recommending, approximately two megawatts for your district, the integration of the lighting controls, and one of the things that we wanted to clearly accomplish was the replacement of those Hildale units in the high school. And you can see that the cost is significant, but the savings are minimal in terms of payback. But it's something that, one way or another, you're going to want to accomplish within the next couple of years to get it done. So it's either pay for it with savings now, or come up with capital later on to have it done. What you see here is a summary, it's an exercise that we gave with your administration. We sat down and we shuffled priorities in and out, or ECMs in and out, to identify what is going to be legally compliant with the ESIP legislation, what's going to accomplish the goals associated with the school district, specifically create a positive cash flow each and every year in order to be compliant with the legislation itself. And so what you see here, highlighted in green and in front of you, is a listing of what the administrator, Mrs. Slunt, Mr. Toth, identified as the biggest priorities for the school district. And essentially, we're comfortable that we can accomplish every one of those items in green and make sure that it has a positive cash flow with no out-of-pocket expense to the school district, and no increased taxes, no burden on your taxpayers and your money. And please feel free to ask questions about anyone who thinks. But here's how it works. The program is overseen by the Board of Public Utilities, and you've selected Honeywell as your partner. We've produced it, as a matter of fact, it's sitting at the table there, is the Energy Savings Plan. It's possibly a 900-page document that now, Mrs. Slunt is going to identify a third-party engineering firm to verify that we did that Energy Savings Plan in compliance with the New Jersey legislation for calculating energy savings. How did we come up with the savings? Have we done it based on good engineering practices and reasonable and achievable goals? Once that third party reviews it, then it gets sent off to the Board of Public Utilities. The Board of Public Utilities will also review the Energy Savings Plan as well, and they're going to have to provide their approval of the plan itself. After that takes place, the school district and Honeywell's at a point where we can implement the project. We're comfortable that, the numbers might change slightly depending on the mix and the match of the program, but as those things, if the school district wants us to continue, as those things are being done, we're going to be refining the numbers and so on, meeting some specific criteria. That specific criteria is obviously to accomplish the goals and have it paid for itself. So that's part of the process itself. So in addition to that, we would also issue a power purchase agreement to implement the solar program in the district. And Honeywell itself, we've recently just implemented two power purchase agreements, happens to be with your bond council. So, so we worked with Mrs. Dorah in identifying our purchase agreements with several other entities. Essentially, Honeywell will provide the solution. Almost made it through. The project that we've identified is a $4.1 million project. That includes everything. That includes your, your engineering, your architect, that includes the implementation of the program itself, it includes construction management, engineering, design, and so on. And the one unique thing that Honeywell does as part of these ESIP programs is that Honeywell will guarantee no changeovers. This is not like your regular construction project. This is a project where we're willing to identify the projects that are obligated to go out to public bid under the law. And when those bids come in, should the bids be less than being projected to you, that money goes back to the school district to implement, to use any way you'd like, as part of the Energy Savings Plan. So, for example, we've included two rooftop units in Valley View, but we didn't do the one at Lazard. If there's enough money left over, you can do the one at Lazard because it's included in our plan. And if the bids come in higher than what we've expected, you get the same project, but Honeywell remains responsible for paying any differences in the over-interpretation. That's the way this program works, that's the way Honeywell's implemented over 35 programs in the state of New Jersey. So all in all, what we're looking at is approximately a 30% energy savings in your district, and a positive cash flow of $514,000 over the term. And depending on how you structure it financially, you can, you can either levelize the payments or you can identify, I think we identified somewhere around an annual cash flow of $28,000 that can be used if, in fact, you need to offset any increased utility costs associated with new cooling opportunities. And that can be, from an engineering standpoint, that can all be identified. With that, please ask me some questions.
How is your zero-cost consulting solar program?
Use your mind.
How is your zero-cost consulting solar program?
Sure. So, power purchase agreement is when we identify solar delivery companies that will come in here and will put together a RFP. And the only thing that they're going to charge you is a cost per kilowatt hour that you use. So, for example, we just received a RFP response from another customer of ours. We projected, or their current utility rate was somewhere around 12 cents per kilowatt hour. The energy company itself, or the solar company itself, will come in and they'll guarantee a rate of 6 cents per kilowatt hour. All the fees associated with installing that project are included in that rate, so the school district never comes out of pocket. And that includes covering your attorney's fees, architect's fees, everything is included in the rate structure and in the RFP that we put on the street for them to bid on. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, and then what happens when the units fail a 15-year period?
Well, so, New Jersey law only allows you to take savings over a 15-year period. The panels themselves are warranted for 25 years, even against, like, baseball bats. They're strong, they go through vigorous testing in terms of making sure that they can't break easily. And if they do, ultimately, at least for that 15-year period, because that's the requirement under the law, and the warranty period as well, the 25 years, the company that wins or is charging you the rate for that, they're responsible for fixing it.
Just thinking with the solar, how much of an area do you anticipate needing to install solar panels, if you were to generate $100,000 worth of savings?
Yeah, it's, it's the roof of every building that you have, including Lazard?
Part of the Lazard roof plus the air impact.
Okay, so it's, it's part of the Lazard roof, and all the other buildings that we've identified belong with that open field underneath the power grid, power lines in back of Lazard. Not power lines, I'm sorry. The open field.
Right, no, you're right, I mentioned.
You're all right mentioning that.
Joe, could I just clarify? I believe that what we said was Lazard roof, William Mason roof, and the area under the power lines behind Lazard, not all of our buildings.
Okay, well, the, well.
Yeah, I don't like this, but it's not all of the buildings.
Oh, it's not, so that's my mistake. And I had Willie, the engineer, that's why, he's, he's the brain, some of those.
So, just an internal question for the board or the district administrator. We did have some ideas about what to do with that, but problems. So what happens to this?
The plan for where the solar field would go is in the very farthest, if you're looking, if you're at the back of the building, the section that's the furthest away from the building is where the solar field would go. The section that's closer to the building, which is more where we were considering other plans, would be left available to that. And we've already had that conversation with the architect, who had originally done the drawings for that plan.
And then, I guess, well, my last question on this top, on top of the solar panels, is do we know that the integrity of the roofs, that the roof at Lazard and at William Mason can support solar? Because we already have solar installed on our, on our high school, and that project was years ago, it was intended to be much larger, but upon evaluation of the roof integrity of the other buildings that were, we expected to put solar panels, we were advised not to.
Paul, we didn't do a structural analysis at this point.
Yeah.
Yeah, structural analysis would take place as we go a little further, if we're going to identify that this is the project that we're going to implement, we'd have to identify a little bit further. And honestly, if the, if the roof could, if the roofs could not support it, we'd have to scale that project to remain compliant with the legislation to maintain a positive cash flow. It's just a, it's just a requirement.
So ultimately, the savings, I don't mean this in a, in a, in a, but all of the savings from the solar project would be less than what we're, we're, you've illustrated here?
They could be, and then we'd have to go back and make a decision, for example, on the split systems or the units that don't necessarily have a good payback, to implement a smaller-sized project to support the savings. You're absolutely right.
Am I understanding right that this isn't costing you just for any money?
That's correct. We were.
And what happens, excuse me, what happens if we don't realize the savings that are projected over a period of time? Who makes up the structural?
Sure, so if, if we implement a project and the school district accepts an energy guarantee, Honeywell's responsible for making sure that those guaranteed, that those guaranteed savings are met. So, for example, we've identified $380,000 worth of savings, and we only saved $330. Honeywell's responsible for writing you a check.
Who's we?
Honeywell. We're responsible for writing you a check, with balance.
And you're in how many districts, or did this in?
Uh, we've done it in approximately 32 districts.
Okay. And what's your record then, have you, have you run a lot, write a lot of Honeywell checks?
Not in New Jersey. We have approximately a 98.6 hit, for lack of a better term, across the country, but we also guarantee over $6 billion in.
How will this interface with the construction that we're doing next summer? I see here, your timetable shows, May June or something like that, Mr. Kasha. How about all the other construction that we have going on in three of our schools? How will that, or maybe the K, how will this work out?
The two projects, although we'll be running simultaneously, are not running in the same places, meaning that the lighting projects that would be going on in the different locations, which would include Valley View, Hildale, and Woodmont, which are the referendum buildings for 2019, they would be occurring in, we would be replacing the lights in places where the other contractors aren't working, and when the other contracts are done, we would then go into those spaces. So although occurring at the same time, they're not actually residing in the same place at the same time.
It just seems to me there's a lot happening next summer.
Well, you mean initially.
And your outfit coming in, the timetable comfortable with, Mrs. Slunt?
Right now, what we're trying to work on is the timing of the air conditioning elements. So, air conditioning in all of the buildings, with the exception of the 500 and 600 wing, has already been covered by the referendum. That is proceeding forward, I see no issues with meeting those timetables. The issue is the 500 and 600 wing at the high school, which was not included in the referendum and is a very expensive project. That's a $1.2 million project. We have been trying to identify a number of different funding sources, the referendum possibly being one, as well as the ESIP being the other, trying to find a way for that project to be successfully completed by the September deadline. So, that essentially is what you're seeing occurring in this presentation, as well as in the discussions we're having on the referendum, considering that it wasn't originally budgeted for.
Just to build on that.
Just to build on that, we don't count on doing all our work in the summer. Everything that we do, and I'll, I'll talk to it if you have other questions, but everything we, we plan on doing, we essentially can't get it all done in the summertime. We know that. And so, for example, you know, we would do, during the school year, we would actually do things, everything, on second shift.
Okay, thank you very much.
I'm sorry, may I ask one more question? So, if, I understand how this works, and I understand this is a preliminary presentation, but as the project becomes more refined and the projects are identified, they could vary a little bit from what's here, but whatever the anticipated savings are from the projects that you identified, and it may be less solar or less of something else, we'll be locked into that, and that's what you're guaranteeing.
That's correct. And, and to that point, we have to submit a plan. Once you submit the plan, the plan is very flexible. It's long, as long as that plan can be reviewed in its entirety, which it will be by a third-party and a BPI, anything within that plan can be shuffled in and out to be part of the plan.
In order to capture?
In order to capture the savings and meet the legal requirements.
How long do you anticipate this taking, your construction from going ahead?
I think we anticipate 12, 12 months.
How much?
12 months.
Any other questions? Well, we rely on Mrs. Slunt, Dr. Wilkott, to keep the guys on the straight and narrow, and they will keep us updated. Thank you very much for your presentation, and appreciate you coming by.
Thank you.
And we'll expect to see those savings, otherwise we'll watch on Honeywell.
We're still on Mars planes, don't go by those rumors that we're going to Caroline. There's only 200 people on Caroline.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Slunt, anything you might have to report?
Just to kind of circle around the back end on this, if you recall, in 2016, you had done a study that evaluated all of the capital projects that needed to be done in the district, which totaled $56 million. Of that, you have 17, a little more than 17 million being done through the referendum. All of the items that are listed in the packet that they gave you on page four are projects that were included in that original assessment. So, this would then be on top of the 17 million that you're doing through the referendum, this would be another $4 million of that original $56 million. So what we're trying to do is, we're trying to find different ways to complete all of those open projects that were part of that original evaluation. The ones listed on page four, identified at different places, inclusive in that is the 500 and 600 wing, as well as things like the air conditioning system over the auditorium at the high school, which, as we know from National Honor Society last year, was not working that well. So we're trying to fix and repair using a different vehicle. We did the referendum as a vehicle, this is now a different vehicle. So to kind of put it in perspective of all the different things we've talked about in the past, this is just another vehicle for projects to get done.
But I think the projects that we really have to make them, the renewable, and this is like the second phase, we still have projects to go, and these are the ones with the air conditioning, the heat.
Correct. Air conditioning being one of the big ones that we're focusing on.
Thank you very much, Kim. Committee reports? Finance parent?
I never recorded the last meeting, but the finance committee meeting, this meeting, finance committee is meeting on the meeting. finance committee is meeting on the meeting.
Curriculum, Mike?
Yes, we met before the board meeting. We discussed the Montville High School program and studies. There are some proposed changes, no major changes. We discussed the ongoing process of evaluating potential changes to the Lazar master schedule. The master schedule committee is going to be visiting four middle schools in December, January, and February, those schools being in Wayne, Chadmore, Township, and Bloomfield. And we discussed some of the changes that need to be made through our Gadsden Theater Arts Program.
Thank you, Mike. We'll be getting a minute to those meetings, in case anyone has any further questions. Do you have policy and personnel, John?
Nothing to report, Karen.
Community affairs, Karen?
Nothing to report right now, but maybe Renee and Luke could send something up after the first of the year, especially as the let's say, um, come to a moment to a project.
Safety and security, John?
Nothing to report, Karen. No added activities.
A delegate New Jersey school board is Karen?
Uh, yes. So I did attend a delegate assembly a couple Saturdays ago. There were no new, no new resolutions to be introduced, but there were two guests who addressed the delegates for New Jersey Education Commissioner Lucille Davy and Mark Major, Associate Executive Director, Director for Policy Development in the Senate Democratic Majority Office. And basically, they presented a document that was prepared over the summer by the legislature's Economic and Municipal Policy Work Group called the Path to Progress. And basically, the Path to Progress lays out some reforms that the government of New Jersey would like to embark on. And some of the titles of those areas include the Kent Chamber Reform, health benefits, regionalization, special education. I have to say that both speakers were really very earnest and forthright. And Lucille Davy emphasized that any talk of regionalization would not be for the purposes of saving money. I think people are really realizing that regionalization is, doesn't save money. But the benefit to a school district like ours that's K to 12 is the integration of curriculum and the ability to provide programs and, you know, various services to students that perhaps school districts in the K to six or K to eight can't. So her idea was really helping smaller districts have access to greater resources to help students. We can, bigger districts can hire more teachers, specialize skills in smaller districts. And just for informational purposes, the sweet spot for a school size, a school district size, happens to be between 35 and 45 hundred. So we sit right in the middle of that. So, it was, it was a very good, very good discussion.
Thank you, Karen. I'm sure what we hear a lot more, especially if they want to pursue this regionalization, then that's always a nice topic to talk about.
Yeah, the sense I got from, I can get a sense from a lot of folks from the Trenton and New Jersey school boards that you cannot force school districts to consolidate. And I think the word "regionalization" is too broad a term. I do believe that the goal is to try and incorporate as many K to 12 districts as they can, for the reasons that Lucille Davy identified, their educational opportunities. So I think almost we should, I mean, I feel like I want to stop saying "regionalization", and perhaps just begin saying incorporating into a K to 12. I think most people have realized you can't force it, and it doesn't, it doesn't necessarily save a whole lot of money. The goal seems to be not money-saving as much as it is improved educational opportunities for students in school or school districts. So, I think it's a lot easier to accept that as a reason, as opposed to simply saving money.
But as long as all the districts have the vote to regionalize, that's a big thing. And a lot of districts here in Sussex County try. As long as you get one town that doesn't want to do it, even though you point out all the merits of it, it's difficult, so.
Right, even, yeah, even school districts that want to consider it, there are impediments to. And that is something that the legislature realizes and will try to address.
I think the legislature is in a way that solved that problem. Thank you. Morris County, Mike?
Our last meeting was on November 7th, and as usual, we had a quick presentation that evening. We did have a super heavy presentation. The next meeting, I believe, is March 20th.
January 31st.
January 31st, I'm sorry. And then March 20th. And in January, the nominating, nominating committee is meeting to look for candidates to serve Morris County. I encourage members of the board to go to the meetings, attend them, and get involved.
Just to fill in, the January 31st meeting is Foundations for Success. So any school board members that need to fulfill the requirement of training, attend this meeting and get it, regardless of whether you're first, second, or, well, I'm sorry, I'm not sure, first, well, let us refer to years. Yes, first year, first, second, or third year.
There's only three years.
No, I think first year school board members can get their training there too. Serve the second and third term, I should say term year, can as well.
I think if you, if people want to attend, the 30th or the March 20th, I think can be switched as well. So, I encourage it.
Oh, and the 31st is here at Montville Township High School, so there's really no excuse for any of us not attending.
Morris County Ed Services, John? I filled in for you last month, and unfortunately, I didn't have a form, and I remember next one, maybe tomorrow?
No, actually.
Checking on you. Mike, um, are there awareness, any?
Uh, no.
Mustang delegation?
Mustangs don't meet in December, this is new practice. They'll be meeting again January 9th.
Ladies and, Cedar Hill, Karen?
Oh, there was no meeting, but I really got the honor of attending the annual Veterans Day service that Cedar Hill conducts, and as usual, it was a very moving ceremony, and I thank them for inviting me.
Okay. Hilldale, Dave?
No, the next meeting is on September 5th.
Joe, Valley View?
Nothing to report.
Mason, no meeting, Woodmont, Mike?
Nothing to report.
Michelle, Lazar?
I'm working for the last one.
And Michael Bryan High School?
The ETC met on November 27th, and as usual, our principal presented a very concise update on things going on at the high school. There wasn't one issue that was, or, and I can say about this discussion at this certain place, and I gave redundant, from the brick and the tiles, but, about midterms, Mike? Any questions where we're going with that? And the answer, our principal gave was close to like, I don't know, we're not going to even study that. So I took it upon myself, and I think, want to say this again, I said it, the brick and the brick. I compliment our administration and our professional staff on the fact that we do review things. And I think that's a professional responsibility that is important in education. You review, you review your schedules, you review your brick, you review whatever of the midterms, and you ask yourself the question, what are we doing, why are we doing it? And we continue to do it, and that's how positive change comes about, through constant evaluation of the different things that we do. And so that's the point that I try to make about what we're doing. And also, at that meeting, when a lot of things were discussed about programs in the high school, and there were so many things that evening that were discussed about, you know, various departments, that I just want to make this comment here. It's amazing the number of things positive and the number of programs that go on in school, and the opportunities for students in all, all areas, be it arts, be it, uh, social studies, be it music that are open to the students. And I think that's a great thing that I try to emphasize about having such a comprehensive setup at our school, and opportunities for so many of the children, okay, young boys.
I think we all agree with you, Mike, there is a great program ongoing at the high school.
There's just so much positive, I felt, came out that we listened to Mr. Central speak about the state of the place. Okay, and we'll get back to that later. That's got it for you.
Thank you. And negotiations, Mrs. Slunt and Dr. Octor, I think we can reboot this for a few years, and then resurrect it right now, okay? And there's no additional reports under that. Public participation is an opportunity, as we all know, or familiar faces out there. Any questions on the agenda? Okay, may I have a motion on the agenda, please?
So.
You got that, a second? Got it? Minutes, any questions on the minutes? L, personnel? A lot there. The next one, I guess it'll even be longer, when I have all these salary adjustments on it, except for the teachers at the high school, right? N, N? Roll call, Mr. Slunt, please.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Aye.
Dr. Cortelina?
Yes.
Mr. Daughtry?
Yes.
Dr. Modra?
Yes.
Mr. Morella?
Yes.
Mr. Rappaport?
Yes.
Ms. Zuckerman?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Next part of the agenda is for public participation, question, right, is not on the agenda? Now, the president? Just for the record, identify yourself, please.
Thank you, my name is Scott Riotta, I'm a Roxbury resident, and more importantly, I'm a proud Montville Township High School history teacher for 25 years. As the holiday season has begun, I'd like to extend on behalf of the entire Montville Township Education Association, very happy, healthy, and safe holiday season to everyone in this room. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, same to you.
May I ask, when is the Christmas party?
Thank you for reminding me. Christmas party is Thursday, January 17th, the MTA Holiday Party, Thursday, January 17th, at the Knoll, same place as last year. Time is 5:30 to 9:30 P.M.
When is today?
January 17th.
Thursday, January 17th, at the Knoll, 5:30 P.M.
I think before we move into other items, on one of the personnel items, I had it written down in some of them. We have a teacher who is retiring at the end of this month, right, Renee?
It's July 1st.
Who's been a full teacher. We honor her in September, it's 50 years of service, and she's now retiring after 50 years and four months. And we could just send her a little letter from the board congratulating her and thanking her for 50 and a half years of service to Cedar Hill. I guess she's spent all her time there?
That's right.
For most of it. And thank her for affecting all the children that have come through her 50 years, that's a long time. And we wish her the best.
I said, she was teaching on some people on board, on the board.
Any other general board comments or no business?
Uh, Mr. President, could I add two, a little, just two, the additional, a little bit of additional, okay? First of all, I just want to mention this, that our colleague and I, Mr. Palmer, attended some events, like the painting music. Okay, the first one was the school rock concert. It was a high flow. The, I thought it was terrific, terrific concert, it gave a show of opportunity for certain students. The second thing, and some others were there as well, there was the marching band booster banquet that was held recently. And to me, that was a terrific evening to witness and be part of, the terrific subculture that exists within the New Jersey community. I was overwhelmingly impressed, and I think the presentation that was made, the video presentation that, I could really, really something to say, and mention it to a superintendent or yourself later in the evening. The presentation was so well done, and what it showed was the complexity and the effort that is required to make a championship music program as we have. And secondly, the role that parents play. It's a really incredible video, and how involved the parents are in this program. And thirdly, and there could be way more features, the camaraderie and experience that those young people have, that the group was filled with this feeling of camaraderie and togetherness and the work that they put into this program. There's a lot of music, there's like, you know, there's a lot of discipline, a lot of work. People talk about sports, things like that, there's a lot of discipline, a lot of work, a lot of, unbelievable amount. And you can see how that brought those students together to teach them really life-forming lessons, I thought. I'm sure Mr. Palmer would want to add, I thought it was a terrific event.
Thank you, yeah, I was there also, and I never mentioned it to superintendent, and maybe we could take that 22-minute film what they had and make it a little shorter, and we're honoring the next, the end of this month, on the 18th, and if time allows us, I'm sure the superintendent will try to give us a little brief show of what was there, because I think the rest of the board would be appreciative to see that. And especially the youngsters in the state, the two directors, the co-directors, and I know I was in line with a couple of parents, and they were just so ecstatic.
It seemed like there was a score between the advisors and the parents and the students was something really to witness immediately.
It was very special.
Yeah, it was special as a group.
Now, I was going to speak to the Bad Boys, but Mike goes first, not next time. I'm going to go first. Any more thing?
If, if, if the people from the board, from the work, she learned. Okay, briefly, let you get home, let you briefly. Okay, just recently, and now this is sort of related, it's related to school, but it's not under the auspices of, the Hall of Fame of Montville High School Hall of Fame has made their induction selections, and I just wanted to tell the board about this, a little bit about it, a little bit of background. There, there's a whole list of nominees with, which will be announced in some, been contacted in the last 24 hours, who have great accomplishments in various fields, but I did want to mention one particular one, and this is for, you talked about 50 years ago, Mrs. Anderson's coming to the district, we both came 50 years ago. And back in the early years of Montville High School, there was a very, very special basketball team, some of you who were here may remember, I call it the Dream Team. And the Dream Team is one of the teams that is going to be inducted this year into the Hall of Fame. It was a special, special team, and a ma- It was a special, special team, and a member, a former member of the Township Committee who was a student at the time, told me, and I never missed a game, we never missed a game of those teams. We're inducting the two-year team, which set a record for winning, they won for forty games in their two-year run. And already in the last twenty-four hours, I've had contacts from California, Florida, Louisiana, Pennsylvania, of members of those teams that are going to assemble for the Hall of Fame induction. It's a great event, if anybody wants to attend, it's April, it's April twenty-sixth.
April twenty-sixth?
April twenty-sixth, it's held right here at the Lakeview, a terrific venue, and it's really an event. It's never been to the Hall of Fame induction, it is really a tremendous event. And I think this is going to be a very special one this year, and I really think the tears are going to be flowing when these people get there.
I think Mike gets a cut of every ticket that he sells, so he'll be making a lot of announcements.
And the ticket prices did go up this year.
Thank you. Did you have anything else, Mike, before you-
That's, I think, that's it for, I'll have more next time. Any other comments? Just briefly, Charlie, just to extend my appreciation, appreciation, two things I might talk about. One, the band, I share its thoughts completely, and I'll defer some other thoughts until I get to see them next week. The second is the School of Rock, and they've done so many great things for the community. I believe this last fundraiser was for the ambulance, isn't it, Mike?
Yes.
And they raised money, and they've raised money for so many good causes, I know they've raised money for MDF, like, the list probably goes on, but, yeah, there's somebody here right there from School of Rock, if the board would say again, congratulations for a job well done, heard the concert was really truly one of the best in the city, truly a great group, and again, the camaraderie in that group as a band, it's a support group, just like anything else, and that's one of the reasons why I always, I emphasize the arts, it's not just a matter of learning to be a great musician, it's a matter of also building a support group and making these lasting friends that go, last you go through high school and beyond.
Thank you, Mike. Any other comments from board members, citizens? We'll be meeting on the eighteenth, don't listen to the natives, not the nineteenth, uh-huh. Be meeting on the eighteenth at the high school. A motion to adjourn, please?
So, is that second?
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much for coming, everyone, and we'll see you on the eighteenth, hopefully.